This historic property and save it from further decay. The building will not be materially altered and the external restoration and interior alterations will be carried out sensitively and preserve this building for future generations. Next slide please. The materials proposed have been chosen to sit comfortably within this location and achieve its own sense of identity and style. A mixture of traditional materials fused with some modern provide a balance between a contemporary solution and a development which is in keeping with its surroundings. The common palette of material colours and features provide a coherent, integrated appearance and a sense of idyllic density to the area. We fully understand and appreciate concerns from local councillors and residents who have made representations. And during the planning process, we have worked productively with highways, conservation and planning officers to provide a scheme that sits comfortably within its site constraints, respects site ecology, existing landscaping and relationships to the local dwellings. Indeed, we have reviewed comments and addressed the following key areas. We have phased the development in order to reduce disruption and noise to local residents. While the removable trees is regrettable, we have worked with the tree officer and agreed to provide replacement trees of a higher standard than required in S P G six. It is agreed that the large trees will have an enhanced presence contributing to the overall site character. We have redesigned drainage system to address councillor Brown's comments to provide sustainable urban drainage system. We've also provided additional cycle storage. As a keen cyclist myself, this is welcome and will allow residents to utilise the many local cycle routes and access into town along the excellent new Princess Avenue cycleway. PV panels have also been provided to the roof to reduce the building's energy use. It has been difficult and frustrating over the last few months, but moving forward, we want to work with local councillors and members of the community to ensure we provide a local and inclusive development and keep members informed throughout the build. We believe our proposal will only save Croxted Lodge by providing a viable use. It will also provide new job opportunities for staff and local suppliers. The scheme will also deliver thirty-six quality apartments, addressing housing need, providing housing choice while providing certainty for the site's use and protection of the conservation area. This scheme is not speculative, has been fully costed and is ready for delivery. And with your support, this scheme can be delivered on to site within weeks. This development will also bring with it the other benefits of protecting local construction jobs, providing local farmers, tractors and suppliers, while new residents will support local businesses in the Smithdown Road area and protecting local jobs and shopping choice for existing residents. Next slide please. In conclusion, this scheme provides local housing for local people within a popular community in which they want to live and provides a social, sustainable and economic benefit in accordance with planning policy while addressing an urgent shortfall in high quality housing supply. Our client trust of the planning committee can see that these proposals demonstrate our commitment to protecting Croxted Lodge, increasing housing choice and while possibly responding to the character of the area and that you may be able to support our application before you today. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to invite members of the planning committee to ask any questions of the architect.
There's no indications at this stage, Trish. Last members could please unmute their mics.
... either. So I'd like to hand over to our planning officer to give us a summary of the issues now, please.
Thank you Chair. Stuart Clark here, team leader of the South team. You've had a very comprehensive presentation there from the agent. This application's already been considered by planning committee in 2018. However, before the section one oh six was signed, Laffbury House was demolished and the applicant wished to make changes to the design and size and also number of apartments by one. The scheme has now also addressed all the issues that were required to be agreed through the prior to commencement conditions, which could no longer have been complied with following the decision. Also, this revision, no further resident objections were received and the scheme has amended and it's supported in principle by councillor Robertson Collins, albeit that she maintains some concerns over highways matters. The day nursery element remains unchanged from that previously resolved to be approved and will secure the long-term use of the heritage asset. The apartment building, whilst incorporating minor design changes, is very similar to that previously resolved to be approved in 2018 and the internal space has been reconfigured to accommodate an additional unit. The design remains modern and will maintain the simple brick pallet as previously agreed, which is appropriate to the conservation area. There remains no significant impact on the amenity of nearby occupiers, with any minor deficits in interface distances being resolved by the use of obscure glazing. Scheme's been carefully considered by the head of highways and transportation, who concludes that the amount of parking proposed is appropriate and that the uses will not result in any detrimental impact on the wider highway network. Appropriate pedestrian access is provided to both the apartments and the nursery. So on that basis Chair, we're happy to recommend the scheme for approval, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from members of the planning committee?
If members could unmute your microphone if you do have any questions at this stage. I don't see any hands raised Chair.
Nor do I Mike. So in that case, I'd like to move that the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Any amendments at all from members in which case you do need to indicate now? No? In which case Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Juárez, just for the benefit of the record, obviously you joined partway through this application, so unfortunately I won't be able to take your vote for this particular item, so that's why I'm not seeking your vote. But again, welcome to the meeting. Thank you. And just for the record, that confirmed the application is therefore approved on that basis and we will move on to agenda item five, which relates to number twenty-one A, Chestnut Grove, Liverpool fifty, which is in Waiver Tree Ward. Chair?
First of all, we have a presentation from the architect, Lakia Labari Olians, and then we have two further speakers in support of the application. So Lakia, would you like to go ahead now? We have up to five minutes.
A brief pause Chair while I bring the presentation on screen. So if everyone could pause until you can see that clearly, it should be coming up shortly. Take a second. I should be able to see that now.
I can see it Mike.
Thank you Chair. Lakia, if you care, could you make a presentation?
Thanks Mike. Morning all. It's just a quick sort of presentation to just explain a little bit about how the journey on this development has come along. So I've prepared eight captions here that encapsulate the process we've had to go through. So the first one is the honey pot nursery and their connection to this development. They're not actually the developers, they are the owners of the building who bought this building as part of the initial asset they bought, which was the presbytery next door. That now forms the honey pot nursery on Chestnut Grove and they've struggled to manage this building and it's slowly starting to develop into disrepair really. And they had a discussion with the Archdiocese of Liverpool about how to transfer the deeds across for this entire plot, which initially included the presbytery. And what the Archdiocese of Liverpool wrote into the initial covenant and the title deeds was that it could only ever be childcare or residential. And so I know there's been a lot of discussion in terms of objections of this building being transferred back into some sort of community use. And I think it has brought to light the nature of the agreement with the Archdiocese of Liverpool. And then the third caption is just about where we sit in terms of Liverpool City Council and the question and certain policies and certain things that are set in place for development, each development that's brought forward. And you know, to the credit to Liverpool City Council, they have written a local plan that seems to cover quite a lot of the issues that previously were in place. And they've worked with us on this. We initially brought a scheme forward that they weren't necessarily happy with, that we felt ticked a lot of boxes and solved a lot of issues in terms of parking. But they came to a happy compromise with us and I think it's important to understand the stakeholder process that we have been involved in. And part of that is to do with Liverpool City Council as well. And then the fourth caption is just to, again, look at this idea of use. Churches are naturally large buildings and difficult to maintain and converting them into residential use isn't anything new. And again, in relation to some of the consultation that we carried out with local residents, there was certain views expressed about why residential development was an appropriate use. And it was just to again communicate our experience that we have done this before. And this is the picture and the image of St Thomas Church in Bristol, which has been a big success. And closer to home, there's one around the corner, St Bernard's Church on Smithdown Road. Number five, again, is just to emphasise that consultation process. We add two consultation processes with local residents, which weren't necessary. This is just something that we've learned as a practice from our trade applying down south is to engage with a community. And a lot of that was sort of getting the local residents in at the first outset and then setting up a second consultation where they weren't able, certain people may not have been able to make the first one. So we ended up setting up two consultations in the church so that each building could be reviewed. And slide, the next slide, again, is just purely in relation to the idea of use and the intrinsic issue on the site, which is parking. Again, it's to justify why we feel a residential use is appropriate for the site. And you only have to look at the other uses that we could potentially have on the site and within this building, regardless of the covenant and the issues, to see that residential use is the one thing that could, that has a reduction in car parking spaces. I mean, we've suggested six, that's based on a one point five per unit space, but at one per unit that we originally had, you would have had nine spaces, which is still the lowest quantum of parking spaces that you would have on the site. And next slide please. So again, it's just some of the things that we have tested out. If you look to the bottom of the slide, you can see just dotted in our two cars just off the road, which is in the parking area. That is, as we justify, is the two parking spaces you would actually now lose off the road. And for us, it's always a conversation of balance where we develop a new property that is going to take two car parking spaces off the road. But if you weigh up the benefits of what we're doing, bringing a massive building back into use that contributes to the community and is not allowing to go into disrepair. I think the application is something that should be supported by everybody, including the local community as well. And if you, next slide please. And then it's again the story that we told previously, which was of the original development that we submitted to Liverpool City Council, which is on the left-hand side, which took away quite a lot of the existing church. And that was justified by a heritage statement. But we worked with Liverpool City Council to get to a point of, again, to use that word balance, that satisfied the retention of a lot of the heritage assets that they felt were important, contrary to our heritage specialist and a quantum of parking that they felt would be appropriate for the site as well. And we do feel that it's been a successful process and the scheme on the right, we're happy with what we've achieved in the end. Final slide please. So then it's just to have a conversation about the future of the building. Again, if we start in summary from the covenant set in by the Archdiocese of Liverpool and the idea of use and the conversations regarding parking. And what we'd hate to see is the building fall into disrepair and G K Developments who represent the honey pot nursery have been brought in to actually prevent that, hence why they've approached me. And then we've basically looked at a way to bring this building back into use via the residential development that we've got in place at the moment. We've got a report from a contractor already who discusses issues to do with subsidence and structural issues that's been affected, especially on the right-hand side of the church, the Chestnut Grove end. And it's a bit of an emergency at the moment and it doesn't, it looks like a sturdy building, like we keep getting told. But it is on its way out and we give it probably five or six years before it starts to cause real issues and especially with Chestnut Grove. So yeah, thank you for your time and I welcome any questions and yeah, any comments.
We do have two further speakers in support. So I was trying to invite you to questions for members once we've had all the speakers in support.
Okay.
Okay. So can I also invite Michael, Gaggy and Dimitri Karli to speak if they want to, in whatever order they want to? Would one or the other of you like to come in now please?
They're the clients, I think.
Oh, I've got them down. Oh, it's okay. It's just when I've got them down was wanting to speak. Are you saying they don't want to speak?
No, it was.
So we've got Dimitri on screen now. Did you want to speak Dimitri?
No, I'm happy for Lakia to take the reins where the client is just giving.
Thank you for letting me know. So members, have you got any questions about the development?
Not indicated Chair.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, we now have councillor Angela Coleman, who has indicated that she'd like to speak. And you've got up to three minutes Angela, if you'd like to go ahead now.
Thank you Chair. First of all, I just want to say councillor Claire McIntyre has sent her apologies. As we all know, she's a research nurse at Alderhey and she's involved in some Covid research at the moment and she sends her apologies that she can't attend this meeting. And first of all, I'd just like to say that we warmly welcome anything in way toward, any developments in way toward which enhance the area. However, with this particular proposal, while the design is in keeping with the area and sensitive to the importance of the original structure, the provision of parking has caused concern for residents. And anything that causes concern for residents obviously causes concern for us. Currently in this area, there's a perennial problem with on-street parking. It's one of the biggest issues that's raised by residents in this area and that's from everything from people parking too close to junctions or bumper-to-bumper parking or obstructions or so on. And these issues arise because of the density of housing in this area and the population. We're already at that saturation point and I'm constantly asking for parking enforcement in the area to supervise. And I'm particularly disappointed with the highways report. It mentions Victoria Avenue as a possible venue for parking. This already has bumper-to-bumper parking. It already has people parking too close to junctions. It's not very safe. And six point four of the highways report says the loss of on-street parking spaces is acceptable to highways. It really is not acceptable to the residents on Chestnut Grove. And it also mentions that on-street parking is lost to allow for on-plot parking. The concerns that have been raised by residents is the fact that there are nine units and only six parking spaces. That means that there are a potential for another three parking cars to be parked in that area where we're already at saturation points. And while highways might consider the parking provision to be acceptable, the residents who have contacted me and deeply upset about this do not consider the parking allocation to be acceptable at all. So I'd just like to ask the committee to consider this and to consider what it is like to live in this area and have to constantly negotiate the parking that takes place there and how this will impact the residents. Thank you.
Thank you Angela. Now, I'm going to leave this whole question to councillor Coleman. Nobody seems to be indicating Angela. So when I call in a case officer, which will be now, I do hope we're going to have some comments from a highways officer as well. But I'd like to hand over now to the case officer initially to summarise the issues and comment on the presentation if need be. And I'd like to ask Andy Dingwall if he would come in after that.
Thank you Chair. Good morning Chair, members of the committee, members of the public. My name is John Hayes. I am the team leader for development management in the north of the city. Chair, members of the committee, you've obviously had a presentation there which has explained the proposal to you and you've got a full report before you, which addresses all the various planning issues associated with the application. I'll skip through the report as it sets out and I'll try and sort of highlight some of the main issues, including that one about parking and then bring in the highways officer as well at the end of that. So in terms of the principle of development Chair, you'll see from the report that there are two substantial issues here. One is whether the principle of residential is acceptable. And the other is the loss of the community facility. As you've heard and as you can see from the report, this is an important building within the Waiver Tree Conservation Area. It's a significant landmark building that has been part of the complex of buildings, part of which is now is the day nursery. You've heard the background to the ownership from the applicant there. In your office's view, clearly a residential use within the residential area would be perfectly appropriate, subject to all the other various planning issues. The loss of the community facility has also been assessed against policy within the U D P in the draft local plan. And obviously there are concerns raised about the loss of a potential community asset. However, in this particular case, given the vacancy of it and given the alternative use as residential, we're satisfied that it is compliant with policy. In relation to heritage and design, we obviously have had a number of discussions with the applicants through the course of the application. And this is important in terms of understanding the situation in relation to parking. You'll recall from the presentation Chair that there was the original scheme that was submitted and then the revised scheme. The revised scheme seeks to maintain the porch and the vestry because they are considered to be part, a significant part of that church and important in terms of protecting the heritage asset. Retention of those has, obviously it's important in terms of heritage matters, but obviously it's had a consequence in relation to the car parking, because it's reduced the amount of space available for car parking off the street and I'll come on to that in a moment. There's obviously some other interventions in the building which are referenced in the report. Suffice to say that we are happy now with all the various works that are being proposed to the building in terms of heritage and design. The other issues Chair, in terms of the standard of accommodation for future residents, again, were clearly set out in the report and your office has considered the proposal to be in accordance with policy. In relation to issues around accessibility, we have this morning received some further amended plans, which provide for additional bathrooms on some of the ground floor properties, some alterations to the area around the lift to provide for a wheelchair turning area so that we now have an increase in the numbers of M four-two compliant properties, which obviously is welcome. There is also some amendments to the car parking to provide at least one disability parking space at the front. In terms of the impact on residential amenity Chair, again, the report takes you through the relationship of the proposed works with adjacent residential properties. And again, we are satisfied that this is compliant with policy. Finally Chair, picking up on the issue raised by councillor Coleman about highways, I think this has obviously been one of the major concerns that have been expressed through the consultation responses. In planning terms, there's obviously a balance between protecting the heritage asset and providing car parking spaces. The spaces that are to be provided now would be a total of six. The original scheme proposed a total of nine, but as I explained earlier, that has now been reduced down to six because as officers, we have also considered that it is necessary to try and secure the retention of the porch and the vestry as part of this development and in order to ensure the protection of the heritage asset. Those six spaces would be accessed directly, effectively off a single part of the drop curb from Chestnut Grove. Clearly that in itself reduces the amount of on-street parking, as has been expressed by councillor Coleman. And as you can see from the representations in the report and by councillor Coleman, there is an issue in this location where there is quite a lot of competition for on-street parking spaces because of the nature of the residential properties in that area, none of which have or very few of which have on-street car parking. Ultimately however, this is about the planning balance and in your office's view, the provision of six spaces to provide a total of nine flats in a highly accessible location is considered acceptable, particularly given the wider heritage issues that we're seeking to deliver. I'll hand over now to my colleague Andy Dingwall, who can perhaps go through the highways and issues in a little bit more detail, but happy to answer any further questions after that Chair. Thank you. Andy?
Yeah. Thanks Chair. Andy Dingwall, highways development control, team leader of Liverpool City Council. And as with all applications, we've looked at this one carefully and the main issue really stems around car parking. And first of all, I'd like to just highlight that this is a highly accessible location. You know, it's close to high-frequency bus routes, local shops and facilities nearby. The development itself provides six off-street car parking spaces, which given that there's virtually, well, there's very few properties in the area that have the benefit of off-street car parking, we believe that six off-street car parking spaces for the nine flats in this particular area, which is highly accessible, is a reasonable level of car parking provision. However, it is acknowledged that the provision of these six spaces does result in a loss of some curbside parking, of which we estimate about three spaces. What I would say is that whilst there is a high demand for parking in the area, largely because none of the other residents have the benefit of off-street car parking, there tends to be some available space in Victoria Avenue to accommodate that additional demand or where that displaced parking might be generated as a result of the loss of the spaces. And it's acknowledged that there will potentially be an increase in the competition for spaces, but it needs to be also acknowledged that residents of the area don't have any rights whatsoever to be able to park their cars outside their own houses or indeed on streets in the area. And the yellow lines that are in place obviously are the responsibility of local council to enforce and we can target resources as necessary if we believe that there's any issues, but because of the displacement of car parking and the increased competition of spaces, that doesn't necessarily always relate to a highly safety issue. So on that basis, we don't have any objections to this proposal. Thanks Chair.
Thank you Andy and thank you John. And do I have any questions from members of the planning committee?
Don't appear to be any Chair.
Okay. Well, on this issue, I did have a point. I've been to a couple of residences that were in converted churches and I've always really thought, they make exceptional residences. My daughter lived in one for a while in Bethnal Green. So I think that not only will we be saving valuable historical buildings here, which from the planning notes, I understand if we didn't have so many Victorian churches already in the city, this one probably would have been listed. So we have to balance the benefit of saving wonderful historic buildings and creating potentially really pleasant accommodation against some of the disadvantages such as additional pressure on the parking round there, which I must say for my leafletting, I do acknowledge it is, you know, there's a lot of competition round there as Andy says, because there isn't any off-street car parking in these historic buildings. Now, I see that Angela, you are indicating, now we don't normally invite questions from anybody except members of the planning committee, but I will allow you to speak. Now, I see that Angela, you are indicating, now we don't normally invite questions from anybody except members of the planning committee, but I will allow you to speak unless any of my planning members object. So unless I have any objections, I'd like to invite you to speak again Angela. You obviously urgently need to say something to us.
Thank you Chair, I really appreciate this. I just wondered whether I would have a chance to come back to some of the comments. It's not really a question, but if you agree, can I come back to some of the comments that have been made regarding from the highways officer and from John Hayes as well?
Yes, if you keep it my turn, so yeah.
Certainly, certainly. And Tricia, I completely agree with you about the building and the design itself. It is very, very nice and it will enhance the area to a degree. However, I think John Hayes has recognised and also, I'm sorry, I've forgotten, oh, Andy Dingwall has recognised and yourself, Tricia, that there is an issue with parking in this area. Every single one of you has said that and I think really we've got to do something about that. Now, how we do that is, you know, debatable, but I would say only having the, the number of units should be reflected by the number of spaces that you can provide for parking perhaps. And also, I think I'd like to say to Andy, you're quite right, residents don't have the right to park outside their properties, but they do have the right to object to any kind of planning which they believe will be detrimental to their lives within the ward. They're the ones who have to live with these things and they have the right to object to these things as well. Thank you Tricia, thank you.
Okay Angela. And now I also have Lakia would like to come back. And again, we don't normally allow that, but I will allow you to speak Lakia as long as you keep it brief please.
Thank you Chair. It's just a, just a quick comment in relation to councillor Angela Coleman's just initial comments. So we've got to, we've got to sort of have a bit of a sensible head on this. So if we, if the church wasn't here, we would still probably need to talk about those parking issues. What we've done is we've tried to create a development within our demise. And for example, me and my girlfriend and our young daughter have just got a house where we needed two car parking spaces. So we're not going to be attracting anyone who has a high dependence on cars. So I don't think it's necessarily fair just to suggest we need an extra three car parking spaces to, to make up the quantum. I think if, if I was buying an apartment in the area and there wasn't a parking space, then I wouldn't buy it. I just think we do, we need to have the sensible head on and think about the word balance that John Hayes mentioned in his, in his discourse. And, you know, for us, it's important that we, we look at what the key issue is here. That church will fall down and we'll have an even bigger issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite councillor Tony Conception who definitely is entitled to speak. Tony?
Thanks Chair. I've listened closely to the arguments and it does seem to me that the original application that I understood that there was going to be nine car parking spaces, but in order to retain the porch and vestry, three spaces have been deleted in that sense. So it's about a planning balance as I see, you know, trying to retain a historic building, but also enabling, you know, this sort of church to be brought back into use in a residential sense. So, and I mean, parking issues, I mean, we have problems, similar problems right across the city. I mean, it's a major issue, we know that. But I think in this sense, I think that we try to strike a balance or therefore, in my opinion, I think I would go with the recommendation of the officer at this stage. Thank you.
And Tony, are there any other questions from members of the committee?
We have councillor Hanson please Chair as well.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you Chair. It's nice to be ignored again or such as well. The developer, again, and our highways people in relation to the parking, there's a balance, but always the balance always goes in favour of the developer as opposed to the residents. And in highways, highways recognise that the parking issue is Victoria Street. Already there's a parking issue there, but it's okay, we can add to that, that issue, we can add to that problem by telling people who live in these apartments to go and park in Victoria Street where we already know and we already recognise there's an issue and a problem. And it's constantly coming from highways and that you can park wherever you want to park and, and you're right, you can park wherever you want to park when you get your car fixed, but that doesn't help or assist either the residents that live in a particular road or indeed the councillors of that particular road, because they're the ones who get the stick. They're the ones who get the arguments, the say to these, but why would you do this? Why would you do that? So probably on balance, I mean, Tony's right in terms of can we reject this? I don't think we can. But really, you know, our highways people really need to get their act together and start taking into consideration residents that live within the area where they are just saying, oh, go and park wherever you want to park. It's very nice when they're living out in the suburbs, they're not living in the inner cities of their property. So somewhere, we as a planning authority need that discussion, need that debate for how we address these issues. And probably the second or third time, I've picked this issue up, but probably the second or third time, this will be ignored, but I'm not going away and we will be raising this issue. And I'm sorry Angela, you know, unfortunately I'm going to have to support this, but I don't like supporting it, but unfortunately I'm going to have to.
Okay, thank you. So I think we'll move to the vote now. I don't seem to have anybody else indicating.
Chair, sorry Chair, John Hayes, can I just clarify, obviously the condition two will be, need to be amended to reflect the latest floor plans which reflect those accessibility improvements with the scheme. So it's just subject to that additional amendment to condition two. Thank you Chair.
Thank you John, yes, and it is an improvement in accessibility and one to be welcomed. So can I move that the recommendation as amended, according to John, be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Any members wish to make any amendments in relation to the proposal? No? In which case we move straight to the vote. Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. And Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. Fair enough to the record, the vote is unanimous and therefore the application as amended is approved on that basis. And thank you to all speakers, in terms of members in the public and our representatives for addressing us on this application. We will therefore now move on to our next items of business. For purposes of clarity, item numbers six and seven will be taken together, both of which relate to the same application site, namely that of Everton Water Tower, which is on Margaret Street, Liverpool 6 in Everton Ward. Chair?
And I'd like to invite Mark Able to address the committee.
Morning.
Morning Mark. And I think the presentation will come up now, yes it has. Yes, carry on.
Yeah, morning members. So first principles, this is a grade two listed water tower. It's built in 1857. The building is of sound construction and it's an important heritage asset to Liverpool. The Water Authority United Utilities no longer require the building and the building is empty and redundant. It is now located in a dense residential area after years of surrounding development. So the questions we asked ourselves were what, what could this building become? What would the applicant like to create? What alterations do we think are possible and what alterations do we think are appropriate? That led us to enter into, you know, once we had a good clear understanding of the pointers above, we moved into the pre-application process with the local authority. We had a clear representation and this was very positive and well received, which gave us the confidence to proceed to a full planning application. Next slide please. So when we're looking at the building in the site as it, as it stands, it's a dramatic piece of architectural masonry construction. We consider all the external and visible elements to be retained and therefore the vast majority of the works are a reinstatement and a refurbishment. This will bring the historic building back to life and it's important for the surrounding area and it would be, it would be a very positive contribution. Unfortunately, the building appears to have attracted drug users and antisocial behaviour in the past. Like I said, the current vacant and empty appearance of the site projects a tired, neglected and negative aura. So the investment in the form of our proposal will certainly improve the appearance of the street and will be a positive contribution to the area and this iconic heritage asset. All drawings submitted illustrate the proposal that respects the character and appearance of the original structure. Our principle of retaining the building and the original cast iron water tank will ensure the iconic character and appearance is preserved. Our sensitive proposal will ensure that functional and practical use will be maintained. That also looks to involve the wider community, albeit on a, on a limited basis. Next slide. So looking at the design and complementing the historic structure, these images that I've just put together help convey the design and the extension we're looking to do above the water tank. The removal of the existing roof covering is the only significant alteration to the original building. We could quickly establish that the structure itself makes lower alterations very difficult without severely compromising the architecture of the existing building. Therefore, our proposal would utilise the existing form, installing a lift and stairwell to access proposed accommodation at the very top of the tower. Above the water tank level, we are proposing the top floor as mentioned and this will be a single-storey extension with 360-degree views of the city. It will have a frameless glaze balcony area, all of which will continue that dramatic theme of the building right from the ground level. The existing covering appears to be a composite material and certainly not original and the cast iron tank is the important part which we are looking to retain. The proposed extension to replace the roof area is very complimentary and it will not be visible from the ground level due to the height of the structure. It's calculated at 21 metres, that's when you would be able to see the top of the glass balustrade, but not until 36 metres, you would then be able to see the top of the flat roof extension. So from those distances, the building will look complete as we've tried to represent in those 3D views. And this, again, will benefit the local area for it to, to bring it back to life. So the existing site is currently a little wild and in need of some overdue maintenance. Once cleared, the site will offer wonderful views of the original building and its detail. Lighting within the arcades is something that is supported and we're looking to fix the external lighting that is currently there to help deter crime and antisocial behaviour. Regarding the site and its boundary, we're looking to remove the existing security fencing, which is unsightly, and reinstate wrought iron railings that have been seen historically. In addition to this, we'd like to install timber trelting and erect evergreen hedging and clematis, something to assist with privacy both internally and externally. The proposed approach would utilise the building's dramatic architecture style and style and stunning views in all directions in an exciting way. So next slide. So just to summarise, in creating this proposal, we have identified the significance of the important asset. And in first principles, we have explored a scheme that will retain the architecture and ensure the building's longevity. The proposal has the support of the local authority following a successful pre-app and a successful application period where the officer recommendation is for an approval. The proposed change of use, internal alterations and roof extension are a direct complement to the original building and have been specifically designed to be subtle and avoid affecting the original architectural character. The proposed alterations of the roof, roof structure offers an innovative, interesting and harmonious design solution which fits the built form of the original structure. And as previously mentioned, we will continue the dramatic theme this building has when first viewed in person from the ground level. So we now look to committee members to support this application for this positive reuse of one of Liverpool's oldest heritage assets.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for the slides. Can I invite questions from committee members now please?
Don't spit on the indications Chair.
No, I don't seem to. So I'm going to hand over now to our case officer to comment on the presentation and on any other issues we need to be made aware of.
Thank you again Chair. So that's a very helpful presentation and hopefully members will understand clearly now what the proposal is about. I think what the presentation hasn't sort of touched on perhaps enough is around the actual proposed use. So in addition to it being used as residential accommodation, the applicant has also made it clear that he wants to use it for short stays via accommodation booking sites and for sort of minor events such as brunch clubs and celebrations. And obviously that's in your report. The principal purpose of course will remain as residential accommodation. Obviously, that use has generated a number of concerns and I'll take you through the report accordingly. Clearly, in terms of the principle of development, and I think that brings this particular listed building back into use is to be welcomed. It's obviously a very, very challenging building to find an alternative use for, given it's built for a specific purpose. But I think the architects, as you've seen from that presentation, have come up with a very positive way of developing the site without undue harm to the heritage assets and I'll come on to that in a moment. But the, the principle of the use is considered to be compliant with the various policies in the draft local plan and the current UDP. In terms of the residential amenity, this has obviously been a matter for some consideration by your officers, particularly given the proposed short stay let part of the proposal. However, we have considered that given the nature of the accommodation, given its elevated position, given the relationship of the water tower to existing residential properties, we're satisfied that with the use of appropriate conditions, any impact from short-term lets can be mitigated effectively. I'll just go through those conditions at the end. In terms of obviously future residents, this is a fairly substantial unit of accommodation, so that there are no issues there. We've looked at it obviously very carefully in terms of the impact on a listed building and again, you'll see from the report that we've given careful attention to this. You've seen from the presentation what's involved and I think we're satisfied that this is a positive intervention which will bring new life back to that building. We've obviously looked at other issues, including things like inclusive access and again, they're addressed in your report, as is the issue around highways and parking. Just in terms of those conditions Chair, you'll see at the end of the report, we've got a number of conditions. The important ones to note are in particular numbers 11, which obviously limits any amplified music being used externally. We've got an hours limited on the balcony being used to 11 o'clock. Condition 12 limits the total number of short stays to a maximum of 90 days per annum. And then, I think we've got a maximum number of people there as well. What condition is that? So yeah, condition eight, we've, we've limited the number of people to stay at the property to a total of 15 at any one time. So hopefully Chair, with those conditions attached, the impact on residential amenity will be mitigated and we can see the return of this building into use. Happy to answer any questions Chair?
We have a question from councillor Hanson. Go ahead Joe.
Thanks Chair. It is amazing, isn't it? A fortnight ago we talked about premises in the inner city centre.
Joe's frozen.
Joe, if you can hear us, if you turn off your video, that should restore your connection.
Yeah, I'm back. I've just, I've just completely lost it. Can you hear me?
We can, thanks Joe now. Go ahead.
So I'll go back to John Hayes and say that I'm actually ganging up on the short stay accommodation in the city centre. And he was saying, you know, it was difficult to enforce the numbers of people and X, Y, Z and whatever. And here we've got an application where you're saying, you know, the maximum number of people can be 15, you can only do it for 90 days per annum. Yeah, but a fortnight ago you were saying this is impossible to please and whatever. So what wonderful new powers have come in or what new powers of observation have come in in the last hour, might have been, and that enables you to make that kind of statements in a report Joe.
Do you want to answer that John?
Yeah, I will try and answer that Chair. So in relation to the item... So, so in relation to the item, um, at the previous meeting, uh, it was, you're absolutely right, councillor Hanson, it was about the issue around short stay accommodation. The issue there, if I recall, was not about, um, what we're trying to do here, which is limit the number of people and the activities associated with the use. It was about whether or not we could restrict it to single, uh, single night occupancy. And I think I made the point that the single night occupancy part of the request was difficult to see how it could comply with the legal tests set out in the National Planning Policy Guidance. The conditions that we've got here, uh, in your officer's view are ones that are reasonable, appropriate and forcible, et cetera, uh, subject to those various tests in NPPG. Um, I think the ninety days um, limitation is, um, there, there is a similar requirement for short stay letting as part of um, wider legislation that's operative in London, and so I don't see that there's any reason why that can't be used as a specific planning condition in this particular case. And then things like the number of occupants, again, that's familiar territory for members in terms of things like HMOs, and then obviously things like hours of operation, again, are, are, are conditions that are considered appropriate and reasonable, uh, and, and applicable in lots of different circumstances. So I hope that answers councillor Hanson's question. Okay.
That's your remark, and on the previous application, on the ability to enforce. And what you were saying quite clearly, you and Fergal, yeah, was that because we couldn't uh, enforce that, it was impractical to enforce that, so as, as a planning committee, we should ignore the um, of, of the exception. In fact, I had to withdraw, uh, my amendment, as I say, um, an, an, an amendment to the application on, on your advice and your Fergal's advice, but here you are coming, and it doesn't, and it doesn't matter whether it's one or twenty-one or a hundred and one, because you're telling me we can't enforce it. So everybody, it's one or a hundred and one, you're telling us we can't enforce it, as you're saying fifty max, ninety days max, how, how do we as a planning committee enforce that, as you're telling us we can't? So why bring it in, in this discussion, in this debate?
Well, I don't know if you can answer that, that enforcement. If you could, would you agree?
I, I can only repeat what I said earlier, Chair, that, that, that in my view, um, that there is a distinct difference between the application that was considered by um, this committee in relation to the previous, the, the item last um, occasion, um, and this particular item. Um, in terms of the number of days, I think that that is something that is enforceable, because you can pick up through things like booking sites and so on, how often it is to be used. Um, the numbers of people, as I say, is a fairly standard condition, um, that we impose on all sorts of things like HMOs, um, and then, um, what else was the, the other one? In terms of hours of operation, um, again, that, that's not that unusual. So I do think there is a difference between the, 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 the situation in relation to the application that was considered previously by this committee for the city centre site and this particular application. Um, I, I don't, I, I don't disagree with, with councillor Hanson. Um, some of the enforcement issues might be more challenging than, um, some, but, but I think it is possible with an, an overall limit on the number of days per annum. Happy to answer questions, Chair.
Yeah, are there any other questions? Michael, I can't see anybody else in the room.
There doesn't appear to be any, Chair.
Uh, can I?
Yes, Malcolm, come in, please.
I'm going to be very surprised if this development ever happens, I have to say. Um, but l- looking at it, I, I was thinking the costs of this was just purely residential accommodation. The costs of producing it for people living in there would need people with substantial incomes, my guess is, to actually buy any living accommodation within the development. However, the people with the kind of resources that are required are not going to buy it in the location that is, that the, the water tower is in, just simply because it's a graded historic building. So therefore, uh, as the discussion went on, and then as Joe brought in, I think, some well-observed questions about how this might be used and whether it could be enforced, uh, the penny dropped. So it seems to me that the only way of getting the money in, the short stay lets are, are quite lucrative in terms of things like Airbnb. Longer term stays, when people do months, two months, three months, they're, they're less lucrative per day. And I don't know whether I can actually vote for this. Obviously, I, I, I think bringing the building into use is a really positive thing. But I can't see it being used for anything else but some money-making scheme, because people aren't going to invest an awful lot of money to live in a graded listed building, which is not in a location to their, to their liking. Very, oh, anyway, suspicious isn't the word. I think there's a, there's a, an, another word that I've, I've got in mind. Okay, but anyway, that is my comments.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Doesn't appear to be any, Chair.
No, so I'm going to move to the vote. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Before we conduct the votes on this item, do members wish to move any amendments to the proposal, please? No? In which case, Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception? Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
I didn't hear that.
So, Joe, you're on mute, if you could just repeat.
I oppose.
Okay, noted, thank you. Uh, councillor Kennedy?
I'm opposing.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Pose.
Thank you. As a result of the vote cast, we have an equality of voting, three members voting for, three members voting against. On such occasions of an equality of voting, we therefore defer to the Chair to exercise a casting vote. So Chair, your vote, please. If you'll mute your microphone, please.
Point, um, Michael, but when I first saw my list of participants, we did have councillor Cummings on.
I don't have him on my list.
On my list of participants, I did have councillor Cummings, so he would obviously make the seven. Um, I...
He appears to be present at the moment, Chair. I can only go on his...
He must have left again, when I checked.
Participants that have participated right through this meeting, so don't wait.
He would only be able to participate if he'd be present for the full course of the application here, so unfortunately, he isn't here for, even if he's able to join.
Oh, my list of participants, um, Michael. But anyway, um, seeing as he hasn't come in at any stage, I, I don't know what's going on there, and obviously, I've already cast my vote, and it was agreed.
Just for purposes of clarity, therefore, Chair, do you wish to confirm a casting vote in favour?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. The effect, therefore, is the application is therefore carried on that basis following the exercise of a casting vote by the Chair. For purposes of those present and listening to proceedings, uh, as councillor Hanson alluded to over councillor Cummings, councillor Cummings may well have been present for part of the proceedings on this application, however, I would suspect he's experiencing technical difficulties with teams, and the vote for, the approach for voting is quite simple. Each member has to be fully present throughout the deliberation and discussions on each application. As he's not present at this stage, he's therefore unable to vote. Within mine, we'll therefore move on to our next item of business, which is uh, number eight on today's agenda, uh, which relates to vacant land between numbers seventeen and thirty-five, Fern Grove, Liverpool Eight, which is in Pickton Ward. Chair, if I may?
Uh, yes, and we have somebody, um, who's going to speak for the applicant, Kevin Lawfree. Apologies if I've pronounced that wrong, you might tell us how it should be pronounced, if I have. Would you like to carry on, Kevin?
Right, thank you. Um, first slide, thank you. Uh, I'm Kevin Lockley, Hogan's Iron Shop, agent for the applicant. Uh, the application is for eight number four bedrooms arranged in four pairs semi-detached properties in Fern Grove. The site is vacant land on one side of Fern Grove, between the remaining properties of what was once a fully developed street. There are recent new dwellings opposite, which have likewise filled a gap in the street's gate, strengthening the urban green. Adjacent to the site, to the rear, is a grassed community space in Moss Grove, and also nearby is the community Fern Grove Green further down Fern Grove. Uh, next slide. The proposed new houses have gardens at the front and rear, and off-street parking, including additional space for disabled parking if required. The new houses follow the existing building line and design to match existing properties broadly in style, scale and materials. There will be a new brick wall rear, and gardens will be suitably treated with hard and soft landscaping. Next slide. Accommodation is arranged on three stories, principal living space on the ground floor, bedrooms on the first floor, and a fourth floor, uh, bedroom in the space. The layers allow us for lifetime living, including level access to the ground floor. The case officer's report, uh, highlights representations of concerned residents, for example, overlooking lots of green space, parking and construction traffic. These are subsequently addressed in the case officer's report. Because concern with loss of green space is balanced with the partly landscaped recreational open space adjacent to the site on Moss Grove. Other comments are addressed within, in, with, are addressed within the construction methods plan, which is to be approved, prior to commencing work on site, which will safeguard and maintain the current amenities enjoyed by residents of first. The application complies with the National Planning Policy Framework and is within the guidelines of the Liverpool Unitary Development Plan in favour of resident development in the area, promoting a range of housing. Environmental health, highways and transportation, drainage, nitrogenities, motor cycle fire rescue service, all have no objections. Planning conditions will apply to support any requirements where needed. Our application complies with planning policy and guidelines, and is recommended for approval. Thank you. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that, it's just getting unmuted, sorry, it took a while. And are there any questions for members of the committee now, please?
Doesn't appear to be any, Chair.
No. Um, so I have, the, we had the resident... On my chair's note, Michael, but I don't know if there is a resident here who wants to speak.
The resident is, is present, Chair, if, if you'd like to invite her in now, thank you.
So I don't have a name, if you'd like to give the name, please.
Uh, the name's on, on your list, Chair, it's Sarah McCullogh, she's speaking on behalf of herself and on behalf of a number of other local residents as well.
Sarah, would you like to come in now, please?
Hi, can you all hear me?
I can hear you, Sarah.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak today. Um, I am a spokesperson for a number of residents on Moss, Moss Grove, um, side of the development, and we have very strong objections to this development. Firstly, we, um, we are aware of the applicant, Miss, Mr Aldermey, and we have concerns on his experience and competence in the ability to build a new housing development of this size. Mr Aldermey has, um, the applicant has established a house on Moss Grove in the past few years, and turned this, um, single, um, residential into its, into two flats. The quality of his workmanship is extremely poor, and we have grave concerns that he, of his ability to actually carry out a housing development of this size to a quality that would be of, of a standard to, to the council. Um, understand, understanding the fact as well that this space is used by the local community, and it is a safe recreational field for children in this area. We understand that there is the Fern Grove Community Garden, and we are close to Sefton Park and Princess Park. However, in the Groves area of Lodge Lane, a number of children do use this space for recreation, and it is a safe space close to our houses where our children can play. And this will cause very much upset within the local community if this space is taken away, and this space, especially in this time as well, where we need outdoor spaces for our children to play, that is safe and loo, and close to our houses. We don't understand that if this development does get approved, that we have put in a number of considerations that we, we would want to be addressed, and I do think that Kevin Lockley just then did address some of them. Firstly, having a solid brick wall on the back elevation of the houses so that, um, those houses can't dunk their rubbish onto the grassland on Moss Grove. We do have a lot of issues of people dumping, um, fly tipping and stuff on the land, and it is quite often, um, reported to the council, but we would not want this, um, back wall to have access to, to the Moss Grove land. We're also concerned that during the construction process, the, the construction vibrations that, um, may take place with having to do lot piling for foundations, et cetera. The houses on Moss Grove have all historically suffered from subsidence. Two of the houses were nearly knocked down in this area on Fern Grove and Moss Grove was due to the subsidence in the area. All houses on Moss Grove have to pay extra insurance for subsidence, and we would want to have some kind of assurance that any piling, construction traffic in this area will not cause further subsidence and cause us to have to pay more insurance or, you know, just further damage to our houses. Um, we, we would also want no access to the construction site via off Grove grassland, again, of all the public place in that grass, and, and we would want to keep that grass to the children if, if this construction project is approved. Also, we would not want the houses to be any larger than two stories. As we are south facing, we do get a lot of light on Moss Grove, which is one of the reasons why a lot of the residents have bought properties in this area, however, I believe. Um, so we would not want the houses to be more than two stories or blocking out our daily sunlight. We also feel that, that any further planning approvals in this area should not be considered until there has been further investment on Lodge Lane. Currently, the pavements and the roads on Lodge Lane are not DDA compliant. The dropped kerbs and the spotted kerbs are, are not DDA compliant, and I have raised this a number of times with a number of councillors and had no response so far. So I would like it to be noted that we are, that we are not, um, sorry, that, that it is not DDA compliant, and, and that there needs to be investments on Lodge Lane first before any further developments, before we have more residents moving to an already highly densely populated area. And it, it is a big concern to me that, sorry, that, um, the Lodge Lane area has not had investments in the roads or the pavements for over thirty years, expecting a number of road and pavement developments.
Now, you have actually had your time now, Sarah, so would you draw some master confusion now, please? Okay, um, now, um, I don't know if any councillors have got any questions for Sarah, but I won't say to you, Sarah, that the case officer will address some of those issues, and he will also point out there are areas... there are areas over which planning committee cannot exercise control. We have to consider the planning application that's in front of us. Are there any questions for Sarah?
Thank you, Chair, there don't appear to be any indications, the last members can only hear your microphone clearly now. No, there don't appear to be any, Chair.
Now, I think I need to read something out from my chair's note, so bear with me. And this is about the issue of the local councillors. Councillor Nicholas has submitted a late representation on behalf of herself and councillors Cadier and Smeadah, requesting that the item be deferred because they were not consulted on the application. Now, the head of planning advises that all ward councillors are only consulted directly on major residential applications of ten dwellings or more, and this is less than ten dwellings. All members do however receive a weekly list which shows all the applications, including all non-major applications. And it is open to individual members to make any comments they may wish to at this time. In this instance, it is clearly up to the virtual committee whether or not we choose to defer the application. However, the head of planning considers that all the relevant planning issues have been dealt with in the case officer report. So, Michael, I think we need to consult the planning committee as to whether we wish to defer.
That's correct, Chair, I believe councillor Hanson's indicated he'd like to comment or ask a question at this stage.
Councillor Hanson, if you'd like to come in, I can't see anybody at the moment because you've got my note up.
Councillor Hanson, if you want to mute your microphone, please, just so we can pick you up, thank you.
Oh, then that's okay now, yeah?
We can now, thanks, Chair, go ahead.
I struggle with the explanation that we only get notified on dwellings of ten or more. I have to say that's my experience. I get notified on a barn or a boss going up three or four or five flats and that kind of stuff, so I'm, 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 I'm sort of, I'm not saying the explanation's wrong, but that's, that's not my personal experience doing a planning application within my ward. It's unusual for councillors to make a request of this nature. And I've been on the council for twenty years, but over the last few years, I've not heard a request from councillors. I've asked legally, can we defer it? If we defer it, will it go to the meeting in December? To allow the councillors to obviously trump and up some discussions with the residents in the area, because clearly that doesn't appear to have happened. And we've, I know those two councillors within Picton Ward are fairly active in planning applications and that kind of stuff, so I've just had to follow legal positions. We're not allowed to do that. If we are allowed to do that, can we defer for a long cycle? And if that's legal, that's okay, I'd be happy to sort the council's discussion.
Michael, if I could add, ask for some legal advice on what councillor Hanson has had to say, and then I'll invite councillor Juarez in.
Thank you, Chair, picking up on the points councillor Hanson's raised, and technically you and the committee do have the ability to defer a consideration of an application if you feel that there has been inadequate or insufficient consultation, whether it be in terms of what's reported by the case officer in terms of the external consultation, or indeed if you feel your fellow councillor colleagues have not had appropriate consultation in the manner described. Obviously councillor Juarez wishes to comment as well, but I think at this juncture, it might be beneficial, once you've heard from councillor Juarez, for the actual case officer to comment in terms of the consultation methodology for this particular area of the city and in relation to this application as well. Just so you have some clarity before you make a call.
I agree with you, Michael, and we also need to get from the case officer what has been belatedly submitted from one of the councillors on behalf of all three, councillor Juarez.
Yeah, well, I am not happy with this issue on this application today with the fact of what's been revealed that the councillors have not been consulted well. Now, I think that this application is quite a substantial application with regards to its location of Fern Grove. Three dwellings to me is in a plot that's been vacant, it's quite substantial really, so just to reiterate the same sentiments of what councillor Hanson feels today, I wouldn't be happy, I think the councillors need to be consulted further, they need to have more time to gather their evidence and to listen to the residents' concerns. That's all I have to say about this, Chair.
Thank you councillor Juarez, it's actually eight dwellings, isn't it, over the two sites? Can I invite John Hayes now to address us?
I think it's myself, Chair, Stuart.
Alright, Stuart, come in please, Stuart.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, in terms of the consultation processes, the council operates a code of practice for consultations across the city. And that's been set at threshold, the members will be directly notified of all major applications. Now, for residential, that equates to ten or more, but they'll also get notified on things like sites over a hectare, applications that involve a thousand square metres of new floor space. And on top of that, we also, as also the code practice also says that we will consult on those applications that tend to have a wider area of concern, and that tends to be things like telecoms masts, pot food takeaways, hubs, HMOs. Other than that, members aren't consulted on non-major applications. Now, there will be occasions where officers will be aware that a member has a particular interest in a site for whatever reason, and they will use their common sense and notify that member or those ward councillors in that particular occasion. But you'll be aware that we get 3,000 applications a year, Chair, and the code of practice is settled so that members don't get inundated with consultations. They do however get the weekly list, which does allow them to pick up any application that they're not directly consulted on so that they can make representation. On this pick, for instance, it's less than ten, it's not a major application. There was no indication that it was on any particular interest, any specific ward member through any correspondence that we held. So the consultation process went through the normal processes in accordance with the code of practice, Chair.
Thank you, Stuart, and we didn't actually get a written representation belatedly then, that's what I was led to understand.
The only, no, I think the only request, Chair, was to defer the application, to allow them to engage.
Okay, that's all belatedly. And I'd like to comment myself, it might be because I'm here on planning, but I'm very aware that if I want to look at smaller applications, I do need to read that weekly list, and I do read that weekly list for my board. So we have a proposal that this item should be deferred, so Michael, if I could hand over to you to councillors in appropriate terms, and we'll get a vote on this from the planning committee, please.
Thank you, Chair, obviously, as you appreciate, we've had some debate on the issue. In terms of if any member of the committee present wishes to formally move a resolution to defer till our next meeting, if you could indicate now and I'll mute your microphones, please, councillor Hanson indicating a belief of that purpose.
I would request to defer, Michael, sorry.
Thank you, Joe, just to confirm that the effect of that would be to defer for one meeting cycle, i.e. to the next meeting, to provide opportunity for the local ward councillors to submit their formal representations on the application. Apologies to Sarah, we can't take any further comments at this stage, but I know you have raised your hand, but I do have to deal with the members at this point. Councillor Thompson, I believe you've indicated as well.
Thank you, and yeah, I just wanted to say that I'd be happy to go ahead as a one-off to defer, to allow these councillors to comment, but I think they should also get a remind, if this goes through, if we do agree as a committee to allow it, that they're reminded of the list and told that it really is a one-off and it's not something that we will generally be doing.
Thank you, Helen, does that mean you wish to second councillor Hanson's proposal to defer as well, just for purposes of clarity?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Before I actually move to the votes, I will make a few comments, but I'm going to bring in a case officer to give us a little bit more context firstly as well, just to aid everyone's understanding of the position, so Stuart, if you could come back in.
Mike, yeah, the only thing I'd like to say is I know that the motion is to move it to defer it to the next committee, which will be on the second, the only thing I would add there, Chair and Mike, is that the closing date for that committee is Thursday. So I'm not sure if there's going to be enough time for members to, based on what their representation was, which was to engage with the community, to do that and get comments back to be able to put them in a report by Thursday.
In the spirit of pragmatism then, and trying to pick up on issues raised by members, if we take it to the committee after that, that will give additional opportunity reflecting the forthcoming holiday period, so that will mean the application will come back to the committee before Christmas. But it would also mean that members have the ample opportunity to consider the application. Councillor Hanson, if you're happy to vary your proposal on that basis?
I'm quite happy to vary it, but I think given the councillors can either get a presentation in, or I would think you would need to consult with residents before you did anything. And then just come along and give a verbal presentation on the second, I mean, either I do it fairly often, whatever's best for the committee and the, the likes yourself, Michael, who run the committee, whatever's best for yourself, I will happily suppose.
I think in this instance then, I'm reflecting the operational pressures on officers in terms of dealing with applications. I'd suggest it being taken to the committee after the second, so obviously the date will be confirmed at due course, subject to our schedule. But I think that gives a little bit more opportunity for officers to deal with any additional representations.
If that's what you want, Mike, I'm happy to move that.
I think that's pragmatic in the circumstances, in which case we'll take a vote, just for purposes of clarity, on the deferral till the meeting after next, so Chair, your vote? Just reiterate, Trish, you couldn't hear clearly.
I'm against that.
Thanks, Trish. Councillor Conception?
Yes, I'll vote in favour, but I wouldn't, in my own personality, wouldn't be prepared to carry on on this physical application, but given that, yes, concerns being raised by members of the committee, I'll go along with the agreement.
Noted, thank you councillor Conception. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you, so for purposes of clarity and for the benefits of public listening, what we've just agreed is to defer consideration of this application, and this will mean the application will come not to our next meeting, but the meeting afterwards, so the mid-December meeting of virtual committee. This is to enable the local ward councillors to seek the views of local residents and to prepare comments and representations on their own part. Thank you, everyone, and we will now move on to our next item of business, which is number nine on today's agenda, and which relates to number 42 Castares Road in Liverpool Six, which is in Kensington and Fairfield Ward, Chair?
Antonia can start and Sarah more. And I'm assuming that Antonia will be commenting on the application initially. Would you like to come in now, and I assume some slides will come up as well?
Hi, we weren't, this is Antonia Cantella speaking, and with Sarah Moore, our registered manager. We weren't asked to prepare any presentation, Victoria.
Okay, Antonia, we're just here to answer questions, are you?
Okay, that's fine.
Sarah, yeah, that's fine, so I assume our case officer is coming now to present to us.
That's correct, Chair, we do have some images to display on screen which are visible for you now, which give some indications as to the layout of the proposed development. Just trying to see if that's clear, and I'm actually going to bring the case officer in if members have any questions.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Chair. This is an application to use the property 42 Castares Road as a three-bedroomed children's home. The property is currently used as a mother and baby unit. And it is proposed, as I said, to operate as a children's home. You'll see from the report that that would be a total of three children with two carers at any one time. So the issue from a planning point of view, Chair, are relatively straightforward, it's whether or not the use of the property in the manner described would be acceptable within this residential environment. And the report takes you through the various issues in relation to the proposal. So, in your officer's view, the operation of children's homes, particularly where they're small scale, can be accommodated effectively within residential areas without undue harm to the amenity of adjoining and surrounding residents. In this particular case, you'll see that the proposal is for a maximum of three children with two carers at any one time, there will be different shift patterns. But again, those shift patterns are staggered so that there will be 12 hours on a four-day off, four-day on roster. So given that, your officer's view is that the the use, the way the property would operate in terms of that use would not be very significantly different from that that you would see with a normal dwelling house. Clearly, the overall numbers of people accommodated there at any one time is appropriate and proportionate to the size of the dwelling. The activity associated with it would just be a change in the shift pattern. And the purpose of these children's homes is to provide as close to a domestic setting as is reasonably possible. So in your officer's view, this should not be seen to be significantly different, as I say, from that that you would experience with a normal dwelling house. For all of those reasons, Chair, that are said out in the report, your officers are happy with the scheme and have recommended approval, subject to the conditions stated. I'm of course happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Don't appear to be any indications, Chair.
Are there any questions for Antonia and Sarah?
No, don't appear to be any, Chair.
So, are those the vote then?
Thank you, Chair.
Can I move that the recommendation be approved, is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair, the members wish to have any comments or amendments before we formally vote? No, in which case, Chair, your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. The application is carried unanimously, and we'll therefore move on to our next item of business, number 10.
Thank you.
This relates to number 12, Manson Road, Liverpool Six in Kensington and Fairfield Ward. Thank you, Chair.
I'm going to hand over to our case officer to present on this, but we have somebody here who will answer questions on the committee if need be for both this and the next item, that's Darren Muir. So, can I hand over to our case officer, please?
Thank you, Chair.
I'd like to say something. Sorry, Darren's got his hand up, Darren?
Yes, sorry, we did prepare just short representations for this, this number, for item 10, and then I'm available to answer questions for both 10 and 11, but we did have some specific points to raise on this.
I'll invite you in now to make your brief presentation, but that wasn't the information I got on my note.
Apologies.
You'll hear questions on both, so yes, we welcome you making your presentation, so carry on, please.
Thank you. So good morning, members, my name's Darren Muir, I'm a principal planner with Pegg's Group here in Liverpool. I should like to, I represent the applicant at this property and a number of others across the city. Normally, I would attempt to answer questions, but in this case, we felt it was necessary to prepare some short comments to address feedback from the local councillor Liam Robinson in objection to the proposed change of use. It's important that the context of the proposal is clear, and this is set out in the officer's report. 12 Manson Road is currently occupied as a C4 use class HMO for up to six residents. A single-storey rear extension and rear dormitory were added to the property approximately one year ago. The change of use to C4 use class HMO and all physical works have been completed under relevant permitted development rights. The lawful development certificate for this change of use was granted in February 2020. The lawful development certificate for this change of use was granted in February twenty twenty this year. Prior to this, as councillor Robinson has noted in his letter from November twenty nineteen, the property was in a poor state of disrepair. The applicant purchased the property in a poor state and has made a significant investment in renovating it and returning it to residential use. As we've mentioned in previous presentations, the applicant takes any reports of noise and disturbance caused by their contractors very seriously. Similarly, they operate a strict noise and nuisance management plan for tenants, which includes a three-strike policy. The applicant will also involve parents or universities where necessary. The applicant's maintenance team inspect their properties regularly to detect any maintenance problems early. They have a full-time maintenance manager who is available to tenants and neighbouring residents twenty-four seven. The applicant also has a physical location on Smithdown Road, where tenants, neighbours or councillors can walk in off the street and speak to members of the team. The main planning consideration to be determined today is whether the property is suitable to accommodate one additional occupant. There are no physical works required to accommodate the proposed change of use. All building works were completed prior to the current tenants moving in. The seventh bedroom already exists, but has not yet been occupied. The property has operated as a six-person HMO since the lawful development certificate was issued at the start of this year. Since occupation, the applicant has not been made aware of any reports of noise, disturbance or antisocial behaviour at the property. As I mentioned, the applicant has made a large investment in renovating Twelve Manson Road and many other properties across the city. As a result, the applicant's properties tend to be in high demand, which allows the applicant to choose tenants who will look after their properties and respect their communities. If any issues do arise, this can be dealt with through the applicant's noise and nuisance policy, which forms part of all tenancy agreements. There are also mechanisms outside of the planning system for dealing with such matters. Regarding the layout of the property, all bedrooms generously exceeds the six-point-five-square-metre space standards. Similarly, the combined kitchen and living area provides sufficient space for seven occupiers. There are bathrooms on the ground floor and first floor. The rear yard provides adequate storage for waste and recycling. The application also includes for the installation of cycle storage. Overall, the property is suitable for uses as seven-person HMO and is sustainably located with shops and transport links within easy walking distance to meet the demands of future occupiers. This proposal is identical to other seven-bed HMO schemes that have recently been approved by committee in the area, both by this applicant and others. For the reasons mentioned, we kindly ask that you follow the advice of your planning officer and grant planning permission. Be happy to take any questions the members may have.
Are there any questions? So Darren?
Don't appear to make any direct indications, Chair.
All right. Well, normally we do do it if people want to speak, but when they have the person who's speaking, then we have the person who's going to object and then question, then the case officer. But either way, we haven't seen any slides on this yet, but I hope it's okay if we leave the slides, the case officer, who will present third. So I'd like to invite councillor Liam Robinson now, who's just admitted.
Many thanks, Chair, and good morning to you all. Obviously, I'm councillor Liam Robinson, objecting to the application on behalf of myself, my two ward colleagues and a number of residents within Manson Road. As committees heard me say on numerous occasions, we have concerns of another poorly managed HMO in the area with all the kind of problems that brings, including a more transient population and particularly the significant acute crime issues that we have only a couple of streets away on Shield Road. Sex working, drug dealing, problem street drinking, for example. We don't believe that this kind of application will ease any of those issues. We've got a significant concern that a seven-bed property is too large anyway, but there's, we've got significant concerns that there could be significant others regularly staying in the property, potentially up to fourteen individuals. There's only two bathrooms in the property. We think that's inadequate for seven people, woefully inadequate for potentially up to fourteen people staying there overnight. We've got also very, very significant concerns about the overbearing extension that has already been done and the very large dormer that has already been done. We think this is the worst kind of overdevelopment and indeed the report that's in front of you does reference the fact that it's a very overbearing development. Concerns about refuse management as well, not least because of the problems with fly tipping and dumping that we have in the alleyway on Manson Road. We'd also point out that the city council's cabinet has voted to start the consultation on an Article Four directive. All kind of of the options that will be consulted upon include sort of inclusion of the Kensington Fairfield Ward. And we think the committee should take into account that emerging policy in making your decision. But let me give you the most significant reason why we're objecting to this. It's quite frankly the awful and abominable behaviour of the applicants over the last eighteen months. This is, the applicant has acknowledged, a retrospective application. Over the past eighteen months, there's been significant damage caused to the neighbouring property. There was a large period of time where there's a hole in the roof, allowing significant water ingress to sort of damage the neighbouring property. There was then damage done to the neighbouring chimney breast by the contractor. We've also had significant problems with contractor waste that is still there, including an RSJ in the alleyway. The property is already occupied, and the elderly residents who live next door have had real problems with loud noise from those individuals. Whilst I acknowledge that the report mentions about waste management, there are problems from this property with most waste management already. I'm glad that the applicant referenced my letter in November of last year. I have never had a response to that, nor neither have I had any responses to the emails that we've sent in recent weeks. Quite frankly, the elderly residents that live next door, both of them in their eighties, one of them has now died of dementia, have had a terrible time over the past eighteen months with the behaviour of this applicant. In my twelve years as a council, it's probably the worst example of unprofessional behaviour by an applicant, by builders accordingly. Quite frankly, it's bloody cruel the way that they behave towards the neighbouring property. For all of the reasons that I've set out, we should be turning this application down. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Chair. Liam, you tell a horrifying tale of conduct of the applicants and the contractors he engaged. In relation to, are those complaints issued, are they being recorded with the City Council?
They certainly have, Joe. They've gone initially through the planning enforcement team when the neighbours kind of first alerted to me last year. More recently, we've been going through our neighbourhood team who have then allocated those accordingly.
Did we, when the complaint went into enforcement, have we, how was enforcement treated by the applicant in relation to the complaint? Were you dealt with speedily? Were you ignored? Were they just put on the file and left to rot?
I obviously can't speak for the officers involved. They would be in a better position to say that. But it certainly took a long period of time to resolve the kind of hole in the roof, for example, which led to significant damage from the water ingress. My concern as well is that when I've tried to directly contact the applicant, I've frankly been ignored. So yeah, this has been a really sort of poor episode in kind of responsible management because it's been completely irresponsible.
Thanks, Liam. I'll pick up those with our officers when we get to the report. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy? Councilor Kennedy, can you unmute? You've got your hand up. You're still muted.
I've got it. I've got it.
We can hear you now, Malcolm.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And apologies for that. Liam, to reiterate what councillor Hanson says, you tell a pretty horrific story. The question, however, that I have, that if we turn this application down, what difference will that make to the abominable behaviour of the applicant? It will still be an HMO with six people, with the same person managing the property. And I'm just questioning what, I understand your frustration. I understand your angle. But what difference will it make? It has to be dealt with by a different means than the problems that you're...
Yeah, I take that on board entirely, Malcolm. We have, as I say, in our kind of attempts to reach out to the developer, we've asked them to kind of work with us on something more suitable. We believe a single-family dwelling is exactly that. But six-bed is better than seven-bed, quite frankly, in terms of the impact it would have in the area. It'd be one less transient individual. That certainly is an improvement on what we've currently got. But I'm not going to say that an HMO is ideal in the slightest because we know the problems that it's causing within the wider area. And yeah, there is no excuse for the way that this applicant has behaved. They are a large property company with a large portfolio of properties around our area and the wider city. So, you know, there is no excuse for kind of, oh, we didn't understand what the rules of the planning system are or the way that we should manage this appropriately. It's quite frankly disgraceful.
I don't seem to have anybody else indicating with a question for councillor Robinson. So I'm going to pass over now to our case officer, who will be able to bring some slides up as well. So John?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. If the, if Mike could bring up the slides. I'm not sure how much they will help in terms of the sort of planning position, to be honest. Obviously, members are very familiar with this type of development. It's all set out within the report, and you've had a very clear presentation on this occasion by the agent on behalf of the applicant, which has set out some of the planning history here. I think it's worth just reiterating that in terms of the change of use and the physical extensions. So both the physical extensions, in terms of that single-storey extension and the dormer, are permitted development. That means they don't require planning permission. Furthermore, the use of the property, whether that's as an extended property with a dormer on the single story or whether it's unextended, its use for a six-bedroomed HMO would not require planning permission either. And that's the background and the context in which you are effectively considering this application. And as you heard from the agent, those works were carried out under permitted development. It sounds as though the additional room was also provided, but it has not been used as a seven-bed HMO. It's been used as a six-bed HMO. Therefore, there has not been a breach of planning permission. The, as councillor Kennedy's pointed out, the issue therefore really is whether or not the occupation by a further individual would cause harm to residential amenity. Now, this actually is an application for the entirety of the development, so you are considering a seven-bedroomed HMO. And you are entitled to make a decision on a seven-bedroomed HMO, together with the dormers and extensions that are included within this application. They are included, I think, to deal with the matter as a sort of belt and braces approach. They, as is set out in the report, they are actually built and they are actually built under permitted development rights. The the point that I wanted to pick up from councillor Liam Robinson, obviously, a lot of those issues are familiar to this committee and familiar to your officers. The Article Four direction, councillor Robinson is absolutely right. There has been a report recently to Cabinet that addresses the issues around the proliferation of HMOs, in particular, how we can control those smaller HMOs through the planning process. And that obviously, as you're aware, is through an Article Four direction. And councillor Robinson is right that there is some further work being done in terms of that wider consultation. However, the Article Four is not of itself policy. The Article Four simply brings into control those smaller HMOs that are currently outside of the control of the planning authority. The policy that we have is the policy currently within the Unitary Development Plan, and it will be hopefully very soon updated through the draft local plan. And the draft local plan identifies a number of areas where there is an over-concentration of these types of property and where the policy then allows us to push back and start refusing them. In relation to that policy, as members will be aware, we have now concluded the local plan inquiry, and therefore we are at a further stage in that process. nonetheless, your officers' view is that the current period, the weight that we can give to that draft policy is still limited. So that's the point I wanted to make in relation to the Article Four. The other issue that councillor Robinson has raised is about the behaviour of the contractors. And again, these are concerns that have been raised with your officers, not just on this site but elsewhere. Clearly, we are limited in what we can do as planning authority in terms of the behaviour of contractors. We can investigate and we will address issues of poor behaviour by contractors where we can. But there are no powers, if you like, available to planning officers to deal with the poor behaviour of contractors. What we can deal with is issues around breaches of planning permission. However, again, we've acknowledged the concerns raised by councillor Robinson. And perhaps unusually for one of our reports in relation to HMOs, we've included section, paragraph four onwards about this particular aspect. And I hope that picks up on some of the points raised by councillor Robinson. But suffice to say, there is not a lot that we as a planning authority can do to control the behaviour of the contractors. The only other point that I would make, Chair, which I try and make in relation to all of these, obviously, the agent has talked about the management of the premises and the fact that they have an office where people can go in and talk to, talk to individuals if they have concerns about the behaviour of them. That's obviously welcome. However, in considering this application, you are considering an HMO. You're not considering the individual management regime associated with that particular individual. So obviously, this is a long-term decision. There is no, you know, there is no certainty going forward that this would be operated by the same individuals. So obviously, you know, you can give weight to that, particularly in relation to councillor Robinson's concern about the sort of transient population and the wider control. So I just think it's important to highlight that particular issue, Chair. But the issues are familiar to you. I will answer any further questions that you may have, Chair.
Are there any questions?
Chair, I believe councillor Hanson's indicating at this stage.
Joe, would you like to come in with your question?
Thanks, Chair. John, thanks for that. I do the F3 on HMOs. But then part of Liam's issue and concern is about the the conduct of the developer. At the end of the day, the developer is responsible for whoever he employs, the contractors or whatever. And that's a point in law that the developer is responsible. So to give by permission, aren't we supposed to consider whether the applicant is fit and proper in legal terms in relation to grant plan permission? Now, if we know there's an issue with a particular developer or whatever on the planning rules and regulations, would that allow us to say, well, actually, that case is not fit and proper? And clearly, the way Liam has laid out the concerns and the experience with the developer over the last eighteen months would lead you to think that that individual is not fit and proper to work within the boundaries of the City Council. And I'm asking a question. Is there somewhere within planning where we believe that individual is not fit and proper? Now, if we believe that he's not fit and proper, would that allow us then to reject the plan of the application of that individual?
Darren, would you like to answer that, Rick?
Absolutely, Chair. Thank you, Joe, for that question. The short and simple answer is no. There are no controls, I'm afraid, to deal with the behaviour of contractors or a particular applicant. Planning deals with land use matters, and so the the applicant's credentials are not matters, unfortunately, that can be taken into account when determining a planning application. Where perhaps there is some additional control is through the HMO licensing process. And obviously, there are requirements through the HMO licensing process to consider the nature of the operator of that HMO. But that is a separate regulatory process and not a matter for this planning committee. And that's why I tried to emphasise at the end of my summing up there, Chair, that I want to make it clear to members that it's great to hear that the that the applicant has a sort of management regime in place, et cetera, which, three strikes and you're out and all that. That this planning committee doesn't have control over that element either. That will be dealt with. That'll be dealt with through the HMO licensing. What you're granting, or sorry, what you're considering this morning is an HMO, not an HMO operated by this particular applicant. The qualities of the applicant can be dealt with through the HMO licensing but not through the planning process, unfortunately. So hopefully that answers your question, councillor Hanson.
Are you happy with that? Well, I'm not saying are you happy, but do you feel you've been answered?
John always gives me an answer. Normally not the answer that I want to hear, but he always gives me an answer and it's very respectful as he gives me the answer as well. So, thank you, John.
Yeah. So we have our usual problem that we're asked to deal with issues that are not necessarily about land use. The planning committee is about land use, what use has occupied the land, and it seems a lot of the issues are about management, and this is why I so greatly regret the government's decision to get rid of our landlord licensing scheme, because at least that gave us some power to manage such issues. So we still have the HMO licensing and that is really the fallback position that we've got to advise, that these issues have to be resolved under. So with no other questions seeming to be here, I have to reluctantly move that the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any further comments from members or any amendments in terms of the resolution proposed by the Chair? In which case, no, we'll move to the vote. Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Noted, thank you, Tony. Councillor Thompson?
Again, reluctantly agree.
Noted, thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Again, reluctantly agree.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
I'll agree.
And councillor Juarez?
Against.
I'll record your dissent by name, per cent of the record. Just before we move on to our next item of business, for benefit of members on the proceedings today, you'll notice there's an inadvertent screen share in place at the moment. I am going to temporarily remove a member concerned, just to try and then invite them back in. So we'll just be a brief pause in proceedings while we try and correct the technical issue with our team system. Thank you. Just bringing councillor Hanson back in now, that should have resolved the technical issue we were having. Chair, there will be a brief pause while Joe rejoins the meeting, so, and then we'll continue on to our next items of business. Thank you. Okay, councillor Hanson hasn't responded, so we do remain quiet, so we will move on to our next item of business, number 11. Welcome back, Joe, thank you, that's excellent. Councillor, Chair, we'll therefore revert to our remaining items. Number 11 is next, which relates to number 42, Portland Road.
And as I've already said, Darren will be here to answer questions. So I'm going to hand over to my case officer to do the presentation, summarise the issues. So, over to John.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just refer members to the additional comments, obviously, from councillors Cadear, Nicholas and Smead in relation to this item, and again, expressing very, very similar concerns that you've just heard expressed in relation to the application of Manson Road, and again, a very, very similar form of development and proposal. So this again is an application to convert the property to a seven-bedroom HMO facilitated by the usual single-story extension, rear dormer and roof lights to the front, and obviously that allows for the use of roof space within the building. Chair, there isn't anything I can usefully add to what's in the report and what you've heard on many occasions at this planning committee, but of course, I'm happy to answer any questions that members may have regarding the specifics of the application. Thank you.
Are there any questions? By case officer? Michael, I don't see any. I don't know if you have any registered.
I don't have any indications, no, Chair.
So I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any amendments or comments from members? No? In which case, Chair, your vote.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Against.
Thank you. I'll record your dissent by name again as well. Thank you. We'll now move on to our final item of business, number 12 on today's agenda, which relates to number 27, Hartington Road, Toxteth, Liverpool 8. Just for purposes of clarity for this item, we do have the architect, agent present to answer questions and they have also provided a presentation if members require additional detail.
So, Michael, are we going to see the presentation? Is the case officer going to tell us that, that's good? Or is it just this, now if there are questions?
If, I will display the images that the case officer's prepared briefly, Chair, and obviously, if there are any questions from members, we do have the architect and agent present if there are any specific issues.
Yes, all right, it's over to you then.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, moving on from what John said on the last two, members will be very familiar with the issues surrounding houses multiple occupation. As I say, similar to John, the issues have been covered, there's not much I can add other than what's in your report. However, what I would say is this came in at nine people and has been reduced to eight because of standard basement accommodation. The proposed rear and the dormer extension are acceptable, they're compliant, they don't affect the amenity of any nearby occupiers. In terms of the noise and activity associated with such uses, members will be fully aware of the concerns. This particular site's not located in an area that has been identified to date as having a high percentage of HMOs or is subject to any Article Four direction. There has been a further rate objection from the three more councillors which are mirroring the comments raised by objectors, but these are all, again, dealt within your court, Chair. It's a standard sort of application that we deal within the report. I'm happy to answer any questions, Chair. There's not much else I can add other than what's in the report.
Are there any questions on this? Well, Michael, I can't see any.
Correct, Chair, don't appear to be any at this point.
I move that the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any comments from members before I take the vote? No? In which case, Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. In terms of the voting members, the voting was unanimous on the application, the application is therefore approved on that basis. Obviously, before the Chair comes in to make some closing comments, thank you for everyone for your patience with a few minor technical issues we've experienced today and thank you for colleagues for viewing today's proceedings. Chair, your comments?
Well, thank you to everybody. My query is that I did see the councillors on my participants list who don't seem to have been here, and that's just a query about the technical part of things. I found that a bit confusing. But thank you to everybody who has been here and I think everyone, we got through remarkably quickly and I think that's a good thing because councillor Hanson didn't have to go off before the meeting ended. So, well done, everybody, and we'll see you on the second.